And one. Hello, everybody. I call this May 11, 2021 Virtual Admin Meeting of the Bernaleo County Commissioners to Order. We will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Ken Martinez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, yes, there's one. That's Item 3A under Real Estate, the Parking Lease Agreement with the City of Albuquerque, to be added to the agenda under consent as Item 7K, and a vote is required for that change.
Okay, thank you. I will move to approve that change. Do I have a second? Commissioner Casada, thank you. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on that? And unmute yourself, so we can hear your wonderful voice.
Commissioner Barboia. Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And now on to Proclamations. The first one is Motorcycle Awareness Month. And I will read the proclamation. I'm sponsoring that. And then we will have a guest speaker. The Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners. Whereas motorcycles are a common means of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation in and around Bernaleo County; and whereas the motorcycle riding for pleasure on the scenic roadways of Bernaleo County is popular among locals and out-of-state riders alike; and whereas the safe operation of a motorcycle requires the use of acquired skills, common sense, and good judgment, and thorough knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements; and whereas safe riding practices and cooperation from all motorists contribute to the reduction in fatalities and injuries on our highways; and by raising awareness, both drivers and riders will be safer while sharing the road; and according to the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration, motorcyclists continue to be overrepresented when it comes to vehicle fatalities, as 4,985 motorcyclists died in 2018, a decrease of 230 from 2017. And whereas speeding is a contributing factor in two-thirds of single-vehicle motorcycle accidents, and 60% occur in the nighttime hours; and whereas it is vitally important that all residents of Bernaleo County be aware, show consideration, and share the road with motorcycles, and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2021 as Motorcycle Awareness Month, encouraging all drivers to be observant, courteous, and knowledgeable about the growing number of motorcyclists on our roadways in order to help prevent accidents, and most importantly, save lives, done this 11th day of May 2021 in Bernaleo County, State of New Mexico, and signed by all the Commissioners. And so, Richard Sturgeon is here to speak about this proclamation.
Madam Chair, it looks like Mr. Sturgeon did not join the meeting this evening.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry to hear that. I know that he really wanted to speak at this meeting. And I just want to say a few words on this. As the Commissioner and as a resident of the East Mountains, I know that motorcycle riding is a... It's one of the ways that people enjoy recreation and the outdoors and commuting. And there was a motorcycle accident a little over a month ago that took the life of a young, 25-year-old, young man in the community. And so, subsequent to that, I've spoken with Elias Archuleta and also Antonio about putting up some motorcycle awareness signs around the East Mountains on the roads that are most impacted by the motorcycle riders. So, this is something that it's heartbreaking when there is an accident, and especially heartbreaking when there's a fatality. So, I'm going to do all I can. And I encourage the other Commissioners, you know, to really think about putting up those motorcycle awareness signs in your own districts. So, thank you. And so, the next proclamation is Foster Care Month. And this is being sponsored jointly by Commissioner Benson and myself. And Commissioner Benson will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board of Commissioners, sponsored by Commissioners Piscotti, Casada, O'Malley, Barboia, and Benson. Whereas children are key to our community's future success, prosperity, and quality of life; and whereas children have a right to thrive, learn, and grow in a safe and loving environment; and whereas foster parents and resource families, including kinship caregivers, provide the love, safety, and stability that children need in order to overcome past traumatic experiences, in order to reach their full potential; and whereas Bernaleo County foster parents are caring for and nurturing more than 1,000 children and youth in foster care today; and whereas Bernaleo County foster parents are helping birth families heal, thrive, so that children can be safely reunified; and whereas Bernaleo County foster parents help children transition from foster care to permanent homes through adoption or guardianship; and whereas we must come together as a community to recognize the important role everyone has in enhancing the lives of children in foster care for children who have experienced abuse and neglect, supporting family reunification, and building strong communities; and whereas there's always a need for more foster parents in order to ensure children, especially older youth, children with complex needs, and siblings have a safe, stable home in their community; and whereas there are numerous individuals, nonprofit organizations, and public servants who are dedicated to raising awareness about the need of children in youth in foster care; and whereas through partnerships with families, child welfare staff, and public and private agencies, there's a collaborative effort to ensure that children are supported and successful. Whereas Bernaleo County joined the nation in specifically recognizing May 4, 2021, as National Foster Care Day, in honor of all who act as true companions and champions for foster care, youth striving to reach their full potential. Now therefore, be it resolved that Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners recognizes May 2021 as Foster Care Month, and further recognizes May 4, 2021, as National Foster Care Day in Bernaleo County, done this 11th day of May 2021 in Bernaleo County, State of New Mexico, and signed, Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. And I just want to point out the sweet thing that you did, offering free ice cream to foster children at your shops.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I have several family members that have been adopted and have gone through the foster care process, including my beautiful little nephew. One of my best friends was adopted through the foster care program. So, it's near and dear to my heart. And yeah, I was honored to... On May 4, also known as Star Wars Day, we did free ice cream to foster care kids. So, yeah, I was honored to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, moving on to another proclamation, which is... It's a very serious one. It's Victims of Homicide. And so, Commissioner Benson, you are sponsoring this. Please read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and this, again, this hits home. We've had so many, you know, families affected by homicide here. We're at 42 homicides here in Albuquerque year-to-date, which is on pace to shatter our prior record. And that's during COVID. That's when everyone's supposed to be staying home, following rules. And they're not. And it's a huge problem, and got to get on top of it. So, thank you. The acknowledgement. Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Victims of Homicide, acknowledging Victims of Homicide in Bernaleo County were honored and remembered in a special vigil on April 22, 2021; and acknowledging Victims of Homicide of all ages, races, genders, and socioeconomic backgrounds; and acknowledging that while the Victims of Homicide have paid the ultimate price, loved ones are left with the pain of remembrance and the loss; and acknowledging Albuquerque and Bernaleo County continue to work to meet the challenge of lowering the violent crime rates in our community; and acknowledging that September 25 is recognized as the National Day of Remembrance for homicide victims. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners announces violence in our community, conveys its sincere condolences, and stands with the families of the Victims of Homicide as they grieve their loss, done this 11th day of May 2021 in Bernaleo County, State of New Mexico. Presented this day, May 11, 2021, Board of Commissioners, signed therefore. And I just want to also introduce somebody to speak. Many of you, I'm sure, remember when the young man Jaden Chavez-Silver was killed in his apartment unexpectedly, shot by a drive-by. Really hits home, unsuspecting teenage boy with the future ahead of him. And his mom actually had a vigil last month that I was invited to speak at. It was in my district, but I wasn't available. And so, I'd like for her to speak. Her name is Nicole Chavez, and she's actually created an organization to address homicides and to help bring awareness to the community. And yeah, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Chavez.
Ms. Chavez, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, everybody. I just want to thank you, Commissioner Benson, for sponsoring this and bringing this proclamation, and really honoring all the loved ones that we've lost to homicide. We had the vigil to bring attention to this crisis, because like you said, it wasn't at an all-time high. But really, to let those families know that we have not all become desensitized as a community, even though it seems like it, because every day when we turn on the news, you know, there's another homicide. So, it's really important, and we thought that we wanted to let all of those families know that their loved ones are not forgotten, that we're here to help them. And so, this is truly appreciated on behalf of robbed my family and those families taken too soon. And regardless of how they were taken, I know I've heard that as well, whether it's crime on crime or not, that's somebody's son, that's somebody's daughter, that's somebody's mother, brother, sister. And so, thank you all for just honoring all of those loved ones that were taken too soon.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chavez. And thank you, Commissioner Benson, for sponsoring this acknowledgement. And so, moving on to public comment. Julianne, how many people have signed up to speak for public comment?
Madam Chair, nobody has signed up to provide live public comment. However, we did receive two written comments that'll be made part of the record for this meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. On to approval of minutes. I will move to approve the March 30, 2021 Budget Hearing Minutes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Barboia. All in favor, raise your hand. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboia.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. And now, thank you. Moving on to our Administrative Minutes. I will move to approve the April 20, 2021 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Casada. All in favor, wave your hand. And Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Barboia.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson. Commissioner O'Malley. Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. Moving right along to Approval of Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk, please provide resolution numbers for Items 7D, 7G, and 7H.
Yes, ma'am. 7D is FR 2021-49. Number G, 7G, is AR 2021-50. 7H is AR 2021-51.
Thank you very much. I will move to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second? Commissioner Casada, thank you. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Terrific. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboia. Commissioner Benson. Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And now, moving on to eight, Adoption of Ordinance Amendment to County Code. Economic Development. Oh, I'm sorry. I should have caught that. Go ahead, Commissioner Barboia. Tell me about your person.
Madam Chair, yes, thank you. I, as you know, I like to acknowledge the folks that serve, and that we get to appoint and serve on their own volunteer time. I'm very excited to be appointing Janice Deveraux to our Library Board. She's a community leader, has done so much for our communities, and lives and has lived in my district for a long time. So, thank you, Janice Deveraux, for your commitment to serve.
Thank you, Commissioner Barboia. And we do like to honor the people who serve on our boards and commissions. So, thank you. Okay, now moving on to number eight, Economic Development. Mei Ling or Marcos to present this Notice of Intent to Adopt Ordinance for GRIP for Pilot Travel Centers LLC.
Madam Chair, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say this is sponsored by Vice Chair Casada. But go ahead, Mei Ling.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff submits for approval the Notice of Intent to Adopt an Ordinance approving a gross receipts investment for Pilot Travel Centers LLC. Private Pilot Travel Centers LLC is requesting approval of a GRIP in the amount of approximately $1.4 million in gross receipts tax reimbursements for cost incurred as a result of infrastructure for their new Pilot Travel Center. All Stanford questions. Sorry, Madam Chair, I was a mouthful.
It's been a long day. Thank you for getting that out. Are there any questions or comments on this item? And I think we have a few people who wanted to speak, so...
We do. Madam Chair, so we do have, representing the project, Ross Shaver and Ron Bohannon. So, I don't know if you want them to speak, or did you want to take questions?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Casada.
So, you know, for me, I'd like to just open up by asking for your support. As you know, the Far South Valley has many challenges with what kind of development comes into that area. If you could just take a drive down there, it seems like I always get the concrete plant, and the asphalt plant, and the auto yards in that area. Mountain View and all those areas have been dealing with polluted type of industries. One of my goals as a county commissioner, when I started four and a half years ago, was a game plan, really, on how we bring in different type of industry, different type of job opportunities. That is the reason why I am supporting this GRIP. I know that we have challenges when it comes to tax incentives. I've done a lot of research on what district and how much tax incentives have been put in every district in the county. And I know some of the arguments may be that, you know, they're a national chain, they're not a local chain. But for me, it's more about the goal of the South Valley and really changing what kind of industry we can bring in. As you know, it's limited right now, because nobody wants to put something next to an asphalt plant, or a concrete plant, or the brick factory, or the auto, you know, salvage graveyards. And so, you know, I'm really hoping that this will be a catalyst in how we bring different types of industry and different types of opportunities for the South Valley. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bohannon. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I just ask quickly? I honestly, I didn't look at the map, but where is this? I assume somewhere along I-25?
Madam Chair, it's I-25 and Broadway. It's near the northeast corner interchange.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And...
Madam Chair, Ron Bohannon.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
I'm the consultant with Pilot. Ross Shaffer is on for Pilot as well. He's the chief vice president of Pilot in charge of development. Just real briefly, we urge your support. Pilot is going to invest approximately $3 million in traffic improvements, water and sewer improvements. We're approximately two and a half miles away from the Water Authority, which resulted in us actually installing a complete water and sewer system that's a state-of-the-art system. We're going to be using total reuse of all the water. So, we'll be using that all on the landscaping. Everything is in there. They're creating some good jobs down in that area. And so, with that, we really urge your support. We think this will also enhance the $2.5 million the county's already investing in that area for the transport area that is scheduled to start shortly. So, we're going to complement that $2.5 million with another $1.5 million in additional transportation improvements in that area. And we think that it'll help start the job growth. It's on the very end of that corridor for Broadway. It's slated for commercial development. So, this is exactly what your planning documents are requesting. And so, we're at the very south end of the county. And so, we hope to see growth going from this point forward. I might just ask Ross if he wants to add a few words with that.
Sure. First off, just let me say thank you for your time in entertaining this GRIP application. I think Ron did a pretty good job of explaining that. A few other points I would add are that these should be new dollars to the county. Obviously, I think most of you know that we have a flying J on 40, but the I-40 and the I-25 traffic is very different. Obviously, we track our customer base, and we understand this. So, these should be new dollars from a regional standpoint. Of course, we're going to be serving the local customer. We plan on doing McDonald's as our fast-food restaurant concept here. Obviously, McDonald's is going to pull people off the interstate, whereas maybe some other restaurants may not. So, we believe those to be new regional dollars as well to the county. So, we're excited to have a very successful project, you know, create... It's going to be about a $15-plus million project. So, it'd be a lot of jobs and revenue created in that manner, along with about 73 jobs is what we're projecting between Pilot and McDonald's. And I believe that's for a total of about $1.6 million of annual salary between those 73 jobs. So, more than happy to answer or address any other questions.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to thank Mei Ling for giving us a synopsis of this particular request. And I'm looking at it now, and I'm looking at the jobs. It looks like there's 35 folks from McDonald's at $9.35 an hour. Some assistant managers at a higher salary, and supervisors for a total of 73 jobs, 73 of them again is McDonald's. So, these are very common fast-food wages. So, essentially, my understanding is the... This company is asking for... To get reimbursed for $1.4 million in infrastructure costs. My concern is, of course, is that, you know, all these particular gas stations, they make decisions based on the market. And it's not like we're trying to recruit a company particularly. It's they're making that decision based on the market, and they see the opportunity, of course, to, as they said, pull people off the street and get gas there, and also stop and get fast food. My concern is that this is a little, I would say, atypical of the kind of requests we get. Typically, there's a little more employment and a little higher salary. And the other issue is, this is a company that, and I can see from the history of the company, it made $29 billion in revenue in 2020. There is a over 500, I think, 750 locations in 44 states, and six in Canada, the provinces of Canada. The issue I have is that, you know, this payback ultimately results in maybe what you call a full-time employee, at least, over the next 25 to 30 years in terms of payback. But this company is going to come up with the money, and they just want to be reimbursed, which I have an issue with. It's not that I, you know, I don't fault Commissioner Casada for trying to do as much to bring revenue into his district or whatever. You know, I'm just saying that this particular kind of industry is not typical of the kind of industry that we subsidize, and that I think this company can definitely handle that cost. Ultimately, I think initially, they did think about it, but I think that they thought, well, you know, why not get, you know, some benefits out of this if they can, which, you know, that's what happens with companies. They'll try to do that, and so, I'm not faulting them for that. But I did read, so I'm familiar with the request. And so, and you know me, I'm going to be forthright about it. This is something that I don't feel is falls into that intent in terms of supporting a company with the tax dollars that we could receive and that we could turn around and use as a county. A lot, you know, if we did this for every business, we wouldn't have a tax base. But, and so, to me, it would have to be unique. It'd have to be something that we want to provide in an area that doesn't have something like this. But, yeah, this is a gas station, a very big one, with a lot of fast-food folks involved. So, that's my position on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to add to that as well. Mr. Shaver, I know that you have a very successful business. When I Googled it today, the figure rounded up to $30 billion, $30 billion with a B. So, you guys are definitely doing something right, man. And I think, I think, like Commissioner, I think actually, like you were saying, that, you know, you've got the one on I-40. You know that the one on I-25 is going to be profitable. You have the best people scouting locations. So, I think you picked a really good location. And Commissioner Casada, I, again, I support you working hard for your community and wanting to get things going, getting jobs going. But again, yeah, I feel like that, you know, I actually give you credit, Mr. Shaver and Mr. Bohannon, asking for this, because that's your job to try to get as much as you can get, because that's what good business people do. But my job is to look out for my community, and I know that $1.4 million can go towards a lot of really good stuff in my community, programs in my community, behavioral health, things like that. So, yeah, I'm also having a problem, because I know that you guys have such a successful business, you can absorb the cost. So, and I think a lot of my programs just can't. So, thank you. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I've got a question for probably Mei Ling here. In the GRIP report, we've got the payback period is said to be 9.5 years, and the return on investment is 11.5%. I assume that's annualized? I assume that's, uh, annualized. Uh, uh, return or is that just a return on the entire project? And, uh, also though, real quick, I, I don't want to, um, understate the value of jobs. And yes, it looks like there's 35 of the 73 McDonald's employees are making, it says 935, but that's obviously an old report because the governor mandated that minimum wage is now 1050 an hour and it's going up to 12. And, you know, an honest day's work is an honest day's work. We've got crazy unemployment right now. And so, and I know, uh, my heart goes out to Commissioner Casada, um, trying to bring good jobs down there. And, uh, and also the McDonald's, that's a, that's an honorable job. You're working for a paycheck and the general manager can make up to 50,000 a year. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to understate the quality of these jobs. But then, uh, maybe Mayling, can you, um, go back to those numbers about the return on our investment? Uh, if it creates jobs, what it would do for us? Because we want to, we want to make sure that people aren't leaving to go to other communities where there's jobs.
Right. Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson. So the economic impact is calculated by the total amount of the investment. Um, so it's, we input the data that is provided by the applicant. Um, so, but then we, we take, so then what we use is what we call a RIMS II model and it's based on, um, calculations provided by the Department of Commerce. And so based on the information that they gave us and what the county, um, is providing as an incentive, um, and then you calculate the time value of money, that's how long it will take for us to basically, if you look at the 1.4 million as an investment, it would take us approximately nine and a half years to see that investment, um, be paid back to Burnaleo County. And then the ROI is 11 and a half percent, which essentially kind of floods into the payback period is basically our... So after the nine and a half years, then our return on investment is annualized at 11 and a half percent.
Okay.
This is Ross.
Nope.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, this is Ross, the pilot. May I speak and just address, uh, your comment and Commissioner O'Malley's comments?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. So, so first off, I just want to say, I think those are very fair questions and comments. Uh, I mean, I can understand, uh, looking at a, a company of our magnitude and understanding, hey, why does a company this magnitude want, uh, 1.4 million dollars, 1.5 million dollars for this project? Let me just share a little history and kind of clarify some of those items. So obviously Pilot, from a business model standpoint, looks at each location that needs to meet certain economical factors or financial criteria. So that location can stand upon its own. And obviously that's been a successful business model for Pilot because it's, it's grown to a successful company of that nature. And when we looked at this project, um, it's burdened by about 2.9 million dollars, you know, based on the information that's been presented. That's two and a half, uh, more million dollars than I would typically spend at a location. And obviously we're only asking for the one, one and a half of that. So we're going to be paying the other half of that. We're going to be burdened with the other million. Uh, and again, that's two and a half more than what we would typically spend. And honestly, the economics do not work if we do not get this GRIP or, and the impact. We need impact fee waiver, which is a couple of agenda items after this. Um, so if we do not get these, um, combined, then we will walk away from this project. And the history of this project is, we actually looked at this same property about four years ago and it sat vacant. This, this piece of dirt, this property is very, very tough to develop. I mean, I'm sure properties undeveloped. So obviously we are here, ready to develop, ready to put shovels in the ground if we get approvals, uh, on the GRIP and economic impact fee waivers. But if we do not, we will walk away and more than likely, other developers can not burden this kind of cost. And this property is going to struggle, continue to struggle for a long period of time. Those, um, those grocery receipts tax, uh, will not be seen. So obviously what we bring to the table is asking for one and a half million dollars from the grocery receipts tax that we generate. And therefore the county gets to do what, what it pleases for the remainder of those grocery receipts tax. So we feel like it's a win-win for both Pilot and the county for us to develop at this location.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you know, I, I, you know, to argue about the, what, you know, the, uh, what kind of jobs, uh, this is providing, um, you know, we always look down at service jobs as bad jobs, you know? But if it wasn't for those jobs, my daughters wouldn't have been able to be successful in college, you know? It's really, those, those are, those are jobs that are very important to my community. Uh, a- as you know, uh, my community, a lot of those, uh, kids, uh, uh, struggle to go to higher education and they have a lot of expenses. So I don't really want to, you know, go into too much detail on the jobs. What I wanted to reiterate is, um, um, I've met, uh, before on that same property with, uh, an asphalt company, uh, with a guy who wanted to do a concrete company there. And, and I told them both that I wouldn't support that, that I couldn't support more polluting, uh, industries in my district because I have them all pretty much. And so, um, I think that this is a bigger picture. I think that the, the, the tax incentive, although I think you make valid points, um, I think that it also shows that, you know, that we're willing to work with other people in my district to bring different types of industry. If we say no to this now, then we set another type of precedence to saying that we don't really care about that area. We don't care how it's developed. And, and another thing we're not really talking about is, is the raising of the property tax in that area, which I think offsets what that's going to do in the long term. I think the value of the property goes up. I think the value, uh, around the property, uh, becomes more viable for other businesses to come in. We got to think about the long game and the big picture and not really focus on, you know, how many of the jobs are, uh, you know, a million point, whatever, uh, to help these guys get them, uh, started and bring in a different type of attitude, a different type of atmosphere in that area. So it will grow in a different direction. Um, a lot of those game plans for me is not only, uh, that area on Broadway and Second Street. It's also, as you know, the extension of Sumport Boulevard and in that industrial area and what kind of jobs are going to go in there. So it's an overall plan to try to entice, uh, outside dollars to come into the state of New Mexico, although I really support inside businesses. We have no tax incentives for small little businesses, for the small mom and pop shops. I mean, if we're going to argue about tax incentives, those are the ones that we should really be arguing at a main level at, at the state, at the state levels. How do we support small businesses that will come in, uh, around a, a large corporation like that and provide those types of opportunities for, you know, what I call economic justice? I just, I don't want to beat it to bet to death. I know everybody has their stance on, on what they're willing to give and, 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 and who deserves tax breaks and who don't. Uh, but I just want us to all really look at what's the larger game plan? What's the long game plan for not only Burnaleo County, uh, in my district? Uh, because I truly believe that not only the future of Burnaleo County is in my district, uh, uh, when it comes to the Southwest Mesa, the South Valley and Mesa del Sol, but it's also the, it's also the, the, the future of the state of New Mexico as a whole and how we bring in different types of opportunities and businesses to the state. So with that being said, um, you know, that's my case. Uh, that's why I stand firm with this GRIP. Uh, I, I know it, it's not a huge really amount of money. Uh, I get that on both, on both arguments. On, hey, we're not giving up a whole lot. They shouldn't, they should be able to afford a whole lot. But I think it's more about what, what are we saying about the state of New Mexico? And what are we welcoming into the state? And who are we willing to welcome into the state? And every state does it. We've all done it. Uh, you know, district, uh, you know, district by district. I could go through the numbers if you want, but I don't think that really makes a valid point that we put in, uh, 400 and, uh, 415 million dollars in District One. Uh, that we put, you know, that we, you know, and, and, and when we go through all those numbers, those are the things that we do in order to tease new different developments, new different type of, of, of things that are happening in our district. Sawmill District is a prime example that has a whole lot of tax incentives that are very successful and they're bringing great opportunities to the state of New Mexico. And all I'm asking for is that same opportunity for District Two. Thank you.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, so I just want to go back to some of these numbers also. There's 73 anticipated permanent jobs to be created here. But then an additional 22 indirect jobs. That's almost 100 jobs. And unemployment is, is too high. And so, all right, so then we've got to ask, all right, well, what's the alternative? We can say no. And then, then what happens? It just remains dirt. So, so then the alternatives, or we could take the, we could take the gamble that, all right, they're going to do it anyway. And, uh, um, maybe we're right. And if we're right, then great. Then we don't have to give up, uh, potential lost, uh, taxes. But if they do walk away, we're getting no tax revenue anyway. And then we still don't have the 100 jobs. And so, I mean, I see it as, this is a, these are really challenging times right now. Our unemployment is too high. I think everybody on this call would agree to that. Um, whether this is a solution or not, I don't know, but I think it's a step in the right direction. And, um, so just think about these 100 people that, uh, that aren't working here. What are they doing now? Right? People don't have jobs. Well, if the state unemployment, uh, retracts the way they're saying that they're going to, to try to incentivize people to apply for jobs, if there's, if there's no jobs, they got to do something to make money. Right? And, uh, that's why I think the more jobs you have that are available, the better. So I, I mean, I support this. Um, I recognize that we would lose potential, um, potential tax revenue that we're not getting now anyway. That's the thing. So, yeah, the, the risk, I don't feel like it's a, a high risk. We're, we're, uh, we would just continue to not collect a certain tax that we're not collecting now anyway in exchange for employment and growth and, and development, uh, 3 million in improvements that they're willing to do. And then that helps support other industries in the area. So that's my position.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Malley, I saw you wave.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the issue is, is always around what our policies are. It's my understanding that while this doesn't violate our policy, this is atypical because typically we're looking at, we're going to subsidize jobs. We're going to use taxpayer dollars to subsidize jobs. And that's what we do. A future tax, taxpayer dollars. What, what is, what is going to be the return? And what kind of situ-, I mean, are we trying to recruit a business? And, you know, it sounds to me like, because I was saying, yes, I'm trying to recruit a travel center. Uh, this is a travel center that, and it'll make it to the point again, travel center with fast food restaurants. They're all over the country and in Canada. And, uh, you know, they're very successful. They've got a successful model. This is a billion dollar industry with, uh, as they mentioned, you know, close to 30 billion in, in revenue. And, you know, you know, there's an opportunity to, to make money. Uh, and it's like, oh, well, we're just going to leave, you know? I, I have been actually asked by other companies, and of course I've been at this a while. And, you know, this sort of like, well, we're just going to go, or we're not going to, uh, we're not, it's not going to develop, you know? We're going to, you know, this, I, which I don't, sort of appreciate that sort of, you know, thinking, quite frankly, is like, well, we're just going to, we're not going to develop then if we can't get this incentive. Um, that bothers me. And I also want to say, I've never poo-pooed any jobs when it comes to fast food restaurants or a lot of us have started out that way where we worked it. You know, I worked at several fast food restaurants when I was younger in high school. And, uh, you know, and that was, well, of course, at that time, uh, costs of living weren't as high. The cost of living are very high right now. That's not a livable wage. But, you know, if it's a high school student, that's something. And then if two of them are working, you know, that's something too, but it's not a livable wage. And so what are our standards regarding subsidizing project, uh, subsidizing businesses? Well, we have to have some. And this to me just doesn't qualify for those standards. And, um, again, uh, you know, the, this was mentioned, they've got a successful business model, should be able to make it. And, uh, so I just wanted to say that because I don't want to, I don't want the, the, the sort of the public to think that I don't, you know, that somehow I think these jobs are beneath people. Because that's not the case. I don't feel that at all. Um, and, and it was, was mentioned, you know, many of us have worked in these industries before. So, uh, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barbo, you're next.
Thank you. I, um, thank you, Madam Chair, um, Commissioners. I, I really appreciate this debate because I am, I am like, I probably live closer to where this will be than anyone on this commission. I live right off of Gibson and, um, I-25. So just to skip down the road, I would, I, I, um, a few things, I think. One, I, I appreciate everybody's take on it. I appreciate the, um, definitely the piece that, right, that, because minimum wage is increasing, these will be a little bit, be a better paying jobs. And I do know my community that lives right here down the street from that. And I do think these are jobs that'll be beneficial to our families in the community. I do push back a little bit on the idea that, um, this isn't a profitable without. And I only bring to, I remember in my first week of commission or something like that, um, I met with, I met with Marcos and, uh, Mayling and they were like, well, with a but for, right? There, there was always, keeps ringing in my head, but could they but for, but for our incentives, could they continue? I would push that. I really believe with the development of the, some, like the work that Commissioner Casada has done to increase, um, what this community is going to benefit from with the development, the Sumpor, the Mesa del Sol development, I actually think this is going to be one of the really, I'm proud to know that this community will have some, some vitality to it because of, um, Commissioner Casada's work up to this point. I do, so I, I, I do really struggle, especially as Commissioner Pascori said, that's a, uh, with a B. That's a billion with a B. Um, and I also just, I have to say for the record, because I'm really struggling with this vote, is that, um, you know, I'm also a mom, a single mom that lived under the stigma of welfare mom, right? Of folks that, because I received, um, food stamps and housing assistance, that folks thought I was a well, or I could get stigmatized as being somebody that was taking handouts or living off the system. Right? So, um, I just want to name that because as a, before being a commissioner, I think I really look towards like, wow, why are we giving all these things to companies? But you can look at me, someone like me, a single mom trying to make it and think that I'm somehow getting handouts and that that doesn't equal the same when we're talking about substitutes to billion dollar companies. So I'm, I'm really, I just, I want to be on the record saying these things. I hope that, um, I want, I also want to really support Commissioner Casada's, what feels like is very close, um, to what he's trying to build. But he's the, what he's already, um, brought vitality to this, um, side of town. Um, so I, I, I want to support that and, and, in the, in that I trust that that's what he believes is good for his community. Um, so I'm, I'm there. I'm in a, I'm on a, I, I feel like a rock between a hard place. I hope that, um, supporting, um, Commissioner Casada's ideas and vision for his district doesn't come back to bite me because I do think there is pieces right around, um, also the, the idea that, um, in that same way that I, when I met with Mayling at the beginning of becoming a commissioner, it was like IRBs and all these incentives are really for special ways that we're increasing the quality of life in our community. And, you know, gas and oil isn't very far from more pollution, um, as, um, Mr. Casada was, you know, saying that he's also trying to avoid. So it's, it's hard for me because I do know that this community has, um, higher rates of asthma because of the pollutants. This is going to be more traffic. I almost feel like I would advocate for open space and I know we need jobs. So I'm moved by Commissioner Benson and, um, Casada. So I'm moved by Commissioner Benson and Casada to support this because of, because of the pieces. And I, and I just want to really be clear on record that I, I hope I don't regret this and that I, it would not be typical. It is atypical for me to support subsidies to a billion dollar company.
Thank you, Commissioner Barboa. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, I don't, I just want to just end again that it's more about the long game and not just this particular project as, as itself, but, you know, what kind of development will come around it and, and, and what the long game is, really. And, you know, you're right, it's a gas station, but, you know, there's, there's a few around there already. And, and, you know, they're, they're on native land. And so, you know, that's what's just going in right now in order for them to try to, you know, figure out what other development will come behind it. I, I struggled too, Commissioner Barboa, that I'm, that I'm making 100% the, the best decision, right? Because I don't know that. You're right, I don't know that. But I have to have some kind of plan. I've got to make some kind of move. And so I appreciate your support, and I, I truly do appreciate your comments.
Okay. And I, I guess I'll, I'll just throw it out that, yeah, I have nothing against jobs like this. I think all jobs are necessary. And, and I, I do struggle with this one because I, I do want to, I want to support you, Commissioner Casada. I, I too appreciate the work you've done in your district. You work so hard. And, and I also feel like, you know, that, that area is just set to pop right now. So I have a feeling there's really going to be a lot of jobs coming in and, you know, and, you know, I, I'm, I hate to say it, but yeah, if, if Pilot pulled out, somebody else would snap that up in a minute with everything that has popped recently due to, due to your good work, Commissioner Casada and other people, that area is just set to boom. So somebody's going to be making a lot, a lot of money there. A smart person would get in now. And yet I really struggle just kind of morally with giving this, this, this money, this tax incentive. So I, you know, I don't mean to try to influence anybody, but I have to follow my own conscience on this and not support the grip.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move for approval.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Benson, seconds? All in favor? Wave your hand, so, okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
No.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescoti.
No.
So called.
And so that passes three, two. Thank you very much that, thank you for the discussion.
And I would just like to say, as the applicant, thank you, you understand the points, understand where, where the no's were coming from. But we appreciate the confidence in the vote in us, and we want to be a partner. And we want to create good jobs. Pilot is a company that builds its people and believes in its people and, and lets people rise within the company. So we, we, we hope to live up to those standards.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Shaver. And, you know, anytime you want to meet and, and maybe talk about, like, some of the programs that I'm talking about, behavioral health, other things that could really use your support and any kind of funding you'd want to throw our way, I think Commissioner Barboa and I would love to talk with you about that and have you really be a vital part of our community.
Well, I can tell you, those are benefits that, that some of these employees will enjoy as, as health and mental benefits, as a part of our benefits packages. So those are, those are items that are important to Pilot, too. And, and these employees will get to enjoy as, as a part of being a part of the Pilot family.
Awesome. Thank you.
And Madam Chairwoman, I'd just like to remind the commission that this is just introduction. We still have this open for public comment. And so I would encourage the applicant to meet with commissioners and maybe provide some more information on what Pilot does and how you anticipate, and maybe a better explanation of how the finances fall.
Thank you for that, Meiling. On to number nine, adoption of resolution. Madam Clerk, please issue a resolution number for item nine A.
Yes, ma'am. AR 2021-52.
Thank you very much. And, oh, it's notice of intent to adopt ordinance for Gateway Apartments, Meiling or Marcos to present.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of an inducement resolution for an ordinance authorizing the Burnalee County Commission to approve a project revenue bond application on behalf of Mesa Apartments LP in the amount not to exceed 35 million. I'll stand for questions.
But Commissioner Casada, this is in your district. Can you talk a little bit about these apartments, please?
This is a multifamily apartments, which is, you know, affordable housing, something that is in dire need throughout the whole Burnaleo County, not just in my district. So as you know, there's a huge housing shortage, and especially with affordable housing. I want people to know there's a difference between affordable housing for people who, you know, want to be able to afford to live somewhere and Section Eight. And, and I don't, I don't discriminate between one or the other. I want to, I want to build them all anyway because they all have a necessity in my community. But, but for this, you know, I think it's really important that we support affordable housing and that we keep those jobs moving forward, and we have those opportunities for families to start somewhere to better themselves, moving on into the future. So with that, you know, I'm kind of, I kind of move for approval, but I will, I will turn over the rest of that to Meiling.
Madam Chair, I just, for a point of correction, the total amount of the bonds is 44 million. We just had to raise the change to that. I apologize.
I saw that.
I just want, I'm sorry. I want to correct that for the record. I apologize.
Okay, thanks so much. Commissioner O'Malley, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did, and I'm very supportive of, you know, we've had several affordable housing projects that have been approved for, there's what they call tax credits. These are 4% tax credit deals typically that have been approved in, in District, my district. And because there is such a need, as, as, as Meiling would say, one of the challenges we still have, even though, you know, we're trying to reach folks at the lower income levels, one of the challenges that we still have is we're still continuing to rent burden families. So the way that the qualit, the qualifying requirements are still based on gross income. And as a result, folks are still rent burdened because that's not their real income. Their income when they, is take home is typically quite a bit less. And so a lot of times, they're rent burdened because they're paying more than 50% of their income on rent. So that's something that I've been talking with others about, including the city, because we're working with them on trying to build more affordable housing units. You know, we really are at a crisis point, and we have real challenges in that department. So, but that is one thing we need to address. And, but I am supportive of, of creating more units. We have folks who are really struggling, and a lot of these people are working families, but the rent is just too high for them. It's just too much of their income going to housing, and it's just not sustainable. Thank you.
Okay. And so Commissioner Casada has moved to approve. I will second that. All in favor? Wave your hand. And thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescoti.
Aye. And Commissioner Benson, I see your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to comment, I, I am in favor of this. And I agree with everyone who's spoken, Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner Casada. We do need more affordable housing. And I think this is a good use of tax incentive to create that. It goes back to the last issue we voted for, which is another thing we need, which is jobs. And so that's the purpose of our commission is to provide our community with what it needs without sacrificing more than we can afford. So I think this is a great one.
Thank you. And moving on to number 10, approvals. Impact fee waiver for Pilot Travel Centers LLC. Meiling or Marcos to present.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff submits for approval the economic base development impact fee waiver related to Pilot, Pilot Travel Centers LLC in the amount of $58,309.10. I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Casada.
I vote for approval.
Again, I'm having an issue with this one because honestly, in my life, I've never actually made $58,000 a year. I've chosen those wonderful helping professions, and so I think a $30 billion company can pay for this. So that's just my comment. But Commissioner Casada has moved to approve. Is there a second on this one? Commissioner Benson, second?
A second, but I do want to raise a question mark at the 10 cents at the end of the dollar amount.
I just, I do not calculate, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioner Benson, I know. I, I don't calculate the impact fee waivers. We have a gentleman in zoning who calculates it, and he calculates it, he's so good, he does it to the penny. And so that's the number we use. And, yeah, that's what I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Barboa.
Um, yeah, I just, again, you already heard all my comments. I, I hope Mr. Shaver and Mr. Mohan and that our communities are worth it and that this, I can't support this, like, I really think that this, I hope our communities are worthy of your development here with the incentives.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboa.
No.
Mr. Benson. Commissioner O'Malley.
No.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescoti.
Nope. Oh, so that, that fails, that on a two, three vote. Thank you. Okay, so are there any items of, for discussion right now? Seeing none. Announcement of the next commission meeting, Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, Board of Finance meeting at 4:00 PM via Zoom and followed by the administrative meeting on May 25th, 5:00 PM by Zoom. And I believe that's it. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful night and blessings to you all.